Okay, it is March twenty-third at a little after four o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and call this of um special city council meeting to order. Item number one is citizens comments.
You do roll call.
Oh yeah, roll call. Is Jennifer on?
I am Mitchell. Coach.
Here.
Allison.
Present.
Sheal.
Here.
Rizzo.
Here.
Yalobus. Tobias.
Here.
Okay, we have five members present. We do have a quorum. Uh, item number one is citizens comments. Uh, this number has been made public uh for citizens comments with the meeting ID. Anybody who wishes to uh speak can call in. Chances are nobody's gonna be calling in, uh but if they do, we can uh take their comment uh and put it on the record.
As of right now, we have nobody wanting to speak.
Okay, as of right now, uh we will go ahead and close citizens comments. Citizens comments are now closed. Uh, considering possible action. Uh, item number two, emergency ordinance and ordinance uh the city of Kyle, Texas. Um, with a dat- a disaster declaration. Um, from Travis Mitchell mayor. Scott, can you take us through this emergency ordinance?
You bet. Uh, council, obviously quite a bit has happened locally over the last week. Uh, that goes for countywide, statewide, and nationally. Our governor has uh relaxed a variety of uh Open Meetings Act regulations to allow us to meet this way today. Uh, part of the statutory guidelines for an emergency meeting. Uh, whenever there is a a an emergency or disaster proclaimed is that the mayor has uh the authority to operate in such a way to call or or issue special orders or declarations. Uh, within seven days, those declarations or orders must be ratified by the city council. Uh, those orders have uh been coming since last week. And uh another one uh is forthcoming today or tomorrow. And uh according to the mayor, uh there will be more orders forthcoming, so get ready. Uh, so there there are a variety of things that are happening as we respond to uh the latest news. And uh I I think we all may have just seen in the last thirty minutes or or hour that Travis County is moving towards some sort of a shelter in place scenario. Uh, it is my uh my guess that we might be moving that way ourselves here fairly soon. Uh, not being prescient in any way, I'm just saying that uh very quickly. Uh, there will be more more opportunities for the council uh here in the in the subsequent days to ratify uh additional orders as they come forward. Uh, with that, there have been three orders uh that you'll see on your agenda that we have worked on. Uh, the uh the first one is the order of disaster declaration, if you will. Uh, the ordinance that you will be voting on uh basically authorizes this disaster declaration. Uh, if you look in the backup to the the packet today, you will see the ordinance. But what I would like to point you to uh more so than the ordinance is the actual uh declaration that is listed on the city's website at at www dot co- city of Kyle dot com slash covid. Uh, there are currently fourteen items under this declaration uh with the the real items mirroring the orders starting uh about uh item eleven. Uh, maybe we'll say nine. So we we tried to uh follow or the mayor tried to follow the recommendation from the White House and then subsequently from the the governor, the CDC, the county that limits the gatherings, public gatherings, to uh no more than ten individuals. Uh, in that uh would would basically be in any confined space in the city. Uh, in that, other than some uh uh essential services, if you will, such as uh large retail uh grocers, et cetera, where a six-foot separation can be safely maintained. Uh, but for non-essential services uh that uh no more than ten per per confined space is is an effect per this order. Uh, office, environment, for example, would be no more than ten uh in a group, in a room. So if if an office were to try to remain open, they could do so with more than ten in the facility. Uh, just not more than ten in a single location. Uh, the that order uh really did follow the school district's closures. Uh, and it goes through April fifth midnight, at which time uh or beforehand, uh we will reassess the situation. The uh, as we move down that declaration, the there are some exceptions. Uh, in item twelve, uh you'll see grocery stores, gas stations, uh medical facilities, outdoor construction areas, and any HCISD activities. I believe the mayor is is looking to change that in his next order for gas stations to also limit their gathering to ten within the uh retail space of a gas station. Uh, item thirteen on that declaration uh does close daycares, and that goes into the the next order. Uh, Hayes County and the cities thereunder began a a closure of daycares and childcare facilities in Kyle. Uh, those are closed outright again during the same time parameter. Uh, in in addition to that, movie theaters, bowling alleys, indoor gymnasiums, massage parlors to match the the governor's language, and then uh public HOA and semi-public playground equipment and pools. And just as an FYI, we did uh assign staff Saturday to uh basically go around to all HOA semi-private playground areas and school district playgrounds in the city of Kyle, and we did fence those off. Uh, so that that's already uh that order has been followed.
Just just real quick on that one right there, Scott. Um, uh, we aren't allowed to do something as a city entity on at the school playgrounds, or did we coordinate with the schools?
Yeah, we we did have the schools' permission. They they did ask us to go out and do that for them.
Sounds good. I just wanted that uh the public to be clear on that one. Thank you.
Right, and that that would be schools within the city of Kyle, either at city limits or ETJ, uh where the school district extends into other communities. Uh, we did not do those playground areas. The uh, the next order uh was was from Sunday. Uh, you'll see item fourteen in the declaration. We we worked with the mayor and created language uh and then distributed it throughout the city uh to gas stations where uh they were required to uh hold on, I apologize. I'm I'm looking at the declaration right now. That is not yet on this declaration, but it is the next order. So the next item on the agenda. Uh, they they were required to uh keep one door propped open uh if it was a manual door, not automatic door. Uh, and that would be during their hours of operation. That is to limit touchpoints within the uh, you know, wi- within those highly trafficked areas. So door handles uh both externally and internally, uh credit card readers, et cetera. You know, anywhere that was a high touchpoint, uh we wanted to main- maintain cleanliness on those. So again, keep one of the doors propped open and then ensure proper sanitizing of those those uh touchpoints. So uh, that was a that next order on the agenda. And again, those those orders went out uh yesterday with with uh some sort of a public signage to accompany those orders, and they were placed uh throughout the the gas stations that the convenience retail through the city. Uh, the uh, I believe that hits those three items on the agenda. As I mentioned, there will be some more uh that are coming. I know that today we are working on finding handwashing or other sanitizing stations to place outside of of uh gas stations to ensure additional cleanliness for patrons. Uh, but that will be coming here probably in the next twenty-four hours or so. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions relating to these orders.
I have a a question for Paige between the um, the declaration and the ordinance. On the ordinance, item number five says this declaration uh shall be effective for a hundred and twenty days. But on the declaration itself, it has everything ending April fifth.
The declaration being the second item or the the order closing the daycare? Is that what we're what you're looking at?
I am looking at the ordinance. Item number five on the ordinance says this declaration continuing a local state of disaster shall be effective for a hundred and twenty days on and from the date of issuance. And then it talks about terminating it if they want to beforehand, but the actual ordinance itself, or I guess the actual declaration itself, because that was the ordinance. Like item number eleven has it ending April fifth.
So here's um, here's how this works. The mayor has declared a disaster. He's got the authority to do that under state law. Once he does that, he has a certain powers that are triggered under chapter four eighteen of the government code and your city charter. And he has those powers for seven days unless you extend them. Number one, number two on the agenda is the document where you extend the disaster declaration, his powers. And so that, number two extends that declaration for a hundred and twenty days. Then, under that disaster declaration during that period of time, the mayor has the authority to issue orders from time to time. Um, and those orders may have different deadlines in them than the overall declaration period. So that's why you're seeing some of the different deadlines for things. Because um, some of the declaration, some of the orders that are issued under the declaration are temporary. For example, the closure of daycare that runs through April third right now. The mayor has the authority under the statute to extend that period of time. And he wouldn't need to come back to council for that. Count, as long as he's operating within the period of the disaster the disaster period. Council always has the authority to come back and terminate the disaster period, and so does the mayor.
Well, on number five, it looks like it says this declaration may be terminated before the expiration of a hundred and twenty days by a subsequent order of the mayor.
Yes.
It doesn't say council.
You you always have that authority to override that. He by himself can also terminate it under that disaster declaration under number five, under the ordinance. Yeah, i- if if you y- you can keep the authority to keep the disaster declaration in place within council's hands if that's a preferred item.
I mean, can we just add mayor and or council to item number five in the ordinance?
Yeah, yeah.
In the verbiage?
Yep. So we're making it very clear that it's mayor and or the council that can terminate it?
That can be added.
I'll add it up to the other uh, the other council members. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to ask?
Mayor Protim, uh, council member Rizzo, uh, if we do um, if we were to terminate um power, would we have to call a special called meeting, or we would have to wait till we had a regular scheduled meeting and put it on the, put it on the agenda?
You don't have to wait for a regular meeting. You can have a special called meeting.
Okay, I just needed that clarification. Thank you.
And this is council member Sheal. Um, so, and it could be an emergency, emergency called meeting so that we could just do it immediately instead of waiting the seventy-two hours for uh postings.
If it if it's an urgent public necessity to terminate it, you could do that.
Hey, Scott, I I know that there were questions really regarding the mayor's authority versus the council's authority, especially after these orders have been ratified uh a- as we're still within the the emergency timeframe. Uh, what what authority is granted to each body?
The mayor has the authority under the um, chapter four eighteen of the government code, which is the emergency management statute. He's got the authority to exercise the same powers that the governor has, but on a local level during an emergency. He also specifically has the authority to um he he's got the authority to control ingress and egress into various areas of the city and to regulate and control the movement of persons and the occupancy of premises in in it within the city. So that's where you're getting, that's where you're seeing not only from from your city, but from other cities, orders from mayors, limiting the number of people that can occupy certain areas and certain buildings. And you're also seeing closure of buildings because of uh those powers. In addition to that, under the city charter, um, the mayor has the authority to um, provide for, I'm pulling up the exact language right now. He he has the authority to, to the extent provided by state law and in time of declared emergency to govern the city by proclamation, maintain order and enforce laws. And so your your charter doesn't expand his power beyond what state law does. So he's within the confines of state law there. So uh, so again, going back to the power under state law, he's got the same authority the governor would have, uh, but it just at the local level and then the ability to control ingress and egress and occupancy of premises. You'll you also will see, the reason why number four is an ordinance for the council instead of an order of the mayor is because the city also has the ability to provide for the public health and safety. And so there are certain powers he can exercise by order. And then there are certain things he needs the council to approve by ordinance, which is why number four is in front of you as an ordinance. So as we go through these orders that are issued from time to time by the mayor, we're gonna have to determine what he's got authority to issue um, by himself, and then what he has to come back to council to approve. And if it's an emergency item, the city has the authority to call a meeting with one hour's notice to act on that item when there's an urgent public necessity. For items number two and four on your agenda, you are adopting those as an emergency document, an emergency ordinance. Your city charter requires two readings of ordinances except when there's an emergency. If you want to adopt the ordinance on one reading with an emergency, you declare what the emergency is, which is what we've done in these ordinances. You have to have five count members of council approve it. And um, you have to, they're only in effect for sixty days. So you'd have to come back and take some action on these, number two and number four, before your declaration period is expired or your disaster period has expired. Does that all make sense?
And the disaster period expires in a hundred and twenty days from today?
That that's how that's how the ordinance is drafted because we uh, we were following the same period as the county. The county is ex- has declared a hundred and twenty-day disaster period. But as a technical matter, you've gotta take some action to extend that emergency ordinance because of your city charter. The reason why it's on your agenda right now with as an emergency ordinance is because the mayor's uh, the disaster declaration expires within seven days. So there's a need to take action on extending the disaster declaration.
Correct, and this will be extended by a hundred and twenty days.
Correct, but it'll expire in sixty unless you, through your normal meeting procedures, re-adopt this. So you'll see this ordinance again. Unless the world changes and we don't need a disaster declaration after sixty days.
Okay, if I make a motion to um to uh approve item number two on the agenda, do I need to make an amendment to uh number five on the uh ordinance, item number five on the ordinance?
Yes.
Any other council members want to chime in before the motion's made?
Yes, so um with would this only include when we have these meetings and you, I'm I'm glad we brought this discussion up as far as what can be done by each body. Uh, so we can only vote on essentially what the mayor has put forward as the ordinance or make some additional changes, uh, for example, what the mayor Protim has just done per ordinance. So generally speaking, if we wanted to take additional steps that the mayor did not take in the ordinance, we would have the authority to do that by making amendments to the ordinance as exists and passing that as a body.
The 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 short answer is yes, if, yeah, yes. Depending on what what you want to do, we might just need to put it in a different format. But the short answer is if you as the council have the ability to provide for the public health, safety, and welfare of the city, and you can do so by whatever's brought before you, amending it or bringing your own items before council to consider.
And and we could do that at our regular meeting or a special call meeting, uh, correct?
Correct.
Long as we gave seventy-two hours' notice.
Right, you can meet with seventy-two hours' notice, and if there's a need to act um, because of an emergency or public necessity that affects the public health and requires immediate action, then you have the ability to call a meeting with one hour's notice.
Sorry, Councilwoman Ellison, uh, the floor is yours again. Sorry about that.
No, you're fine. Uh, so right now, we're just looking to um make a decision on this, the first ordinance here. Sorry, I'm trying to cycle through all my tasks.
Right.
Uh, number two under considering possible action.
Right, item number two. And we're voting on the ordinance. We're not voting on the declaration itself. I mean, it's, we are voting on the declaration, but we're really passing the ordinance that has the declaration included in it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, well, with that, I'm ahead. Go ahead, go ahead, councilman.
I was gonna say the uh, so the ordinance I'm just making sure, coming through it again, uh, doesn't include every aspect as outlined in the declaration. For example, those exempted uh businesses. Unless I'm missing that.
I- if it if it makes you feel better, um, you could, as part of your motion on the as part of your motion on the ordinance is to ratify the declaration as well, the terms of the declaration, plus make that change to section five. You could do that.
Yeah, I just wanna, I guess my concern is just uh making sure um, the ordinance is clear and covers everything that the declaration would cover, unless that is implied and in your legal opinion unnecessary.
It it's uh, it's belts and suspenders if you ratify it. It's not necessary because the mayor right now is exercising authority he has to issue these orders. And if he doesn't have the authority to issue an order, it has to come back to council as an ordinance. So right now, what he has done is he's issued orders within his authority. It's not needed that council ratify that, but it doesn't hurt that you do so, so that you as a body are feeling that you support those measures. That was a long, that was a long answer, but um
Would expect anything less from you, Paige?
Well, I have a
I'm just messing with you.
I I have a reputation to uphold for being
Uh, well, I guess, thank you, Paige. Uh, I guess for me, I I'm in agreement with uh, I guess particularly the part of the declaration that stands out to me um, that's not in the ordinance, ordinance or items number twelve and thirteen, the exemptions that apply and the uh establishments that would be closed entirely. Um, looking at that list, um, I am comfortable with all of those. Um, I think that we probably, we probably could be a little bit more specific as far as um, what are those necessary? Uh, wh- what would be with grocery stores, for example? Because we have, uh, I've seen a lot of comments and I've seen other ordinances as well and declarations that um, outline some of the uh goods and services places like uh, you know, like a like a Kohl's or or something like that, or um, or even these um oh, gosh, uh, places itself, uh, particularly pet-only supplies, you know, and different things like that. Uh, would, I guess that's kind of, it's kind of been ambiguous as far as if those are included included. And I've seen the public kind of debate on why are these open and why are they not? Or or why are they not closed and what have you? Um, I just think if we perhaps try to be a little bit more exhaustive with our definitions, um, it might provide some clarity. And uh, I'll say, because there's silence. Uh, I think a great example, uh, if anybody's seen the Dallas County's order uh that they did, I believe, yesterday. Um, or amended amended yesterday, uh, is probably one of the better uh orders I've seen. It would, just how exhaustive it is and the definitions of each term. And it it really clearly lays out where it's, it it takes a lot, a lot of the ambiguity of what is considered um exempted and not.
Mayor Protim.
Mayor Pro Tem Tobias here, county. I think uh Councilman Ellison makes a a good point on that because I think we have been seeing. Uh constant feedback from our constituents as far as um. Being specific on the grocery stores and the shopping centers. Uh why is Kohl's open versus this store? And I think it's um more clarity that I believe that everybody's wanting. Uh being very specific to what these uh. Ordinants are gonna come across it, and that's what I'm seeing a lot on my end. As far as the area of how specific are we going to be on these uh ordinance or gas stations. Medical facilities, for example, are we going to? Um in their specific number for showing up for the clinics and so forth.
Scott. This this uh declaration has been in place since. May- mayor made the announcement late last week. On this, so this has been in place over the weekend and the past few days and hasn't really changed, correct?
Yeah, original declaration was probably, I want to say maybe as as early as Tuesday or Wednesday of last week, and then we have. Slowly added to it as he's come out with additional orders.
And the the mayor has the ability to issue orders to clarify anything that. They discover becomes uh is confusing. If that helps.
Okay. I think I think the nature of doing this, there is always going to be some stuff that's confusing. Um and it'll be our job to really iron that out. Uh as we move forward, because I think we were making some of these decisions, we don't, we don't have everything completely. Ironed out somewhat, so to speak, because uh you know, we just can't uh foresee everything that uh disaster declaration. Um creates, but uh that's that's up to us to kind of keep going through and 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 creating that clarity for the public. So um I'm comfortable with the uh declaration as is right now that's been in place. Um as far as the ordinance goes, the only change that I would like to see made is. Amending uh item number five. Um to say uh that the declaration may be terminated. Before the expiration date of a hundred and twenty days by the subsequent order of the mayor and or city council. If um. If no one else has anything to say before that, then I'm gonna go ahead and uh make a motion. Uh for that amendment and then a motion for the item itself.
Yeah, I I'll I'll just say uh before you make the motion, I don't think this goes far enough. And I do think that this is the opportunity for us, um. You know, I'm not sure why the mayor couldn't be on the call today, but. I think this is an opportunity for us to officially and publicly give our input. As you know, the mayor is is going, you know, on an hour by hour thing and needing to make decisions and may even. Uh uh put. You know, make a decision in real time based on what you know, the White House is doing, what what the state is doing, maybe other jurisdictions in our area are doing. Uh so he he's on his toes as far as making those decisions, I think as far as. Uh when it comes time for us to have our special meetings or whenever we have on this, I think this is our opportunity to kind of. Hammer down uh some of those details that maybe were, you know. Put together from original idea based on real time and trying to make an adjustment. Um which I think is the case with one of our our later agenda items. And it gives us an opportunity to to really. Uh hammer down the details of this and get into the minutia of what exactly would be covered under this ordinance, so it takes out a lot of that ambiguity. I think uh one of the things that, you know, we need to be cognizant of is our uh. Our residency moves throughout central Texas uh for employment. And you know, there may be rules, you know, in one jurisdiction that are different from another jurisdiction. And I know that the the city and the county and and they've tried to work together to get some continuity and some cohesion there on that. But as you you know, they're about to go to a shelter in place uh position uh in Kyle, I mean in Austin. And I think that's gonna, you know, have a ripple effect throughout the entire region. Um but I I agree with the the addition uh of the on item number five. And the other uh clarifying points we've made, I just think this would really be a great time for us. To really hammer down some of the finer details of this, and like I said, uh there was a great example. Uh by our um by Dallas County, I'll bring them up again, that really gave an exhaustive list of what is essential retail. What is essential critical infrastructure, what is essential government functions, what are essential healthcare operations? And and it's an exhaustive list, and it makes it pretty clear and straightforward what what's going on. And I think at a time of crisis like this, the more clarity and more defined we can be at every opportunity we can be. Uh is beneficial to our community.
Right, but that was for a shelter in place, correct? That's for the shelter in place that that uh Dallas County.
The amended order, uh yes, uh for a shelter in place, but I think that. You know, one of the things I think we've all learned is there's a no, a a number of different uh terminologies that are coming into our lexicon. From from this crisis that we're in, and I think that, you know, there's an opportunity to perhaps take some pieces of. What is generally considered in the the uh general de- the uh definition of shelter in place or. Or you know, all these different things that we have, I think there's an opportunity to take some pieces from that in order to incorporate them.
Well, what what it sounds like to me is that that the mayor might call a shelter in place. Um sometime soon, uh. What Scott alluded to other things coming that we don't know about, and that is the power of the mayor to. Create those declarations for seven days and then we ratify them. Um so right now before us, if you guys want to add more to items twelve and thirteen and go through it. Um you know, that's that's council's prerogative on that. I'm open to hearing the suggestions.
So I I I kind of agree with uh some of the stuff uh Councilmember Ellison's saying, but one of the things that I want to remind us is is that. Uh Austin still hasn't gone into shelter in place, uh they're leaning that way, if they do go that way, then we, you know, as a city uh. Anyone commuting that way will have to adhere to that, uh but we're hoping to create some. Uh creative ways here to to avoid that, one of the things it's gonna take is the public, you know, adhering to all the warnings. And taking everything we say seriously, um I'm I know the mayor's working on 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 some uh ways to try to keep. Kyle open and not have to do that unless it comes down from a state uh mandate or a county mandate. But I think cities could be a little more proactive if they came out and started implementing ways. Of of trying to get people to adhere and be safe, the concept of 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 doing what's. Best for the community, and that's us, you know, social distancing, that hand washing, not touching surfaces, being creative, you know, when you're at the pump. Uh there's there's gonna be a a a a number of ways that we can try to uh get. Our citizens here in Kyle to adhere to what we're saying and try to stay open, uh but it's gonna, it's gonna, I think, really. Gonna come down to people taking onus on uh what they do daily, you know, so we're we're uh. You know, as a council, there's only so much we can do, but uh I think I'm good with the amendments that you have in place and uh. Uh I'm I'm ready to move forward if if someone else has anything.
Yeah, I'll just say, I think that, you know, once again, I guess when it comes to the terminology and particular things, there. I think it's a domino effect, you know, what the governments and and will do. Will change the habits of the employers and then therefore the people. If if we don't take action and and do something and make it clear on what we're doing. Then businesses are gonna continue to skirt the line and say, okay, where where am I at, I'm over here, I'm gonna continue to run businesses normal until. The government does something, uh and then they'll continue to have their employees do what is necessary to. For them to keep their jobs and they will continue to to go where they need to go and move about the city and all these different things. Otherwise, their businesses and people are not going to change their habits unless really I think. That a requirement is put in place, uh you see all across our country. Where people are continuing to um ignore. Uh the warnings and what is being uh dictated by both our science and medical community and as well as our. Uh our government and our uh officials that are telling us how to behave in this certain time. Um and so I I just really think that this is our. Opportunity in order to really shape the behaviors of what is going on in our community in order to prevent the spread.
Okay, well, right now for item thirteen on the declaration, we have the following establishments closed entirely. Daycare, childcare facilities, movie theaters, bowling alleys, indoor gymnasiums, massage parlors, public. HOA and semi-public playground equipment and pools in this declaration right now. Is there something uh Councilmember uh Ellison that you wanted to to talk about adding to that?
So first I um I would like to ask Paige, so part of in that declaration includes daycare and childcare facilities. But we also have another agenda item um on those solely in particular, correct?
Correct.
So would one. Have authority over the other, um so if we included it, I guess the scenario would be if we included it in this ordinance. Would it be necessary to do the other ordinance?
It's. If you're going to include it in this ordinance, it needs to be consistent with the mayor's most recent order. If that answers the question. So he he issued the order, he issued the first declaration and dealt with day daycare in one way. And then issued a sub and a later order that amended. The first or the first declaration to actually close the daycares.
Correct, oh okay, yeah, so the first one was there was a limitation on. Occupants per room and facility, and then the new one was the updated with closed entirely.
The original had five documents for per classroom, I think twenty max per building. And uh we we uh changed it to say, just to be closed.
So then if we pass this one as is, then it does it include. With the limitations or would it be with the the changes that he made with the the new ordinance?
The new ordinance, where we are right now today, we are just ratifying what's currently happening.
But you understand what I'm saying, because like we haven't completely entirely agenda item. For childcare and daycare facilities and to close them entirely for the timeframe that was specified.
The the reason, the reason for that is just a tech, it's a technical thing, um you have to extend his. Emergency declaration, you have to extend his declaration, his declaration occurred on the fifteenth, sixteenth or seventeenth, going by memory. He dealt with the issue as it stood at that time, uh and then has issued orders. Updating the response based on change changes in facts and factors. Number two just is extending that declaration period so that he can continue to. Exercise his ability to issue orders to respond to things as they occur. So if you adopt the ordinance number two, and then you ratify the orders that have been issued, that'll that'll um incorporate. Approving the mo- the most recent version of what he's issued. So if you if you want to approve what he's done up to now. Which is what's in the declaration plus now the the later order closing the daycare. If you just approve the ordinance with and ratify the orders that have been issued. So far, that would accomplish that goal, if you want to change anything. Then that's another discussion, potential action. It looks like the mayor's on the call, so he can address these, he can participate in this conversation.
Hey, I'm uh, I've got you on, uh. Hello, everyone, sorry, this is kind of weird, not the normal way to hold. Uh for any of us, I apologize for that, thank y'all for jumping in early, um I'm I'm just uh driving right now, so you're on speakerphone. I I don't, are we in executive session or is this a public meeting? Is this a a regular?
Public meeting.
Okay. Um yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with whatever, my only uh concern is 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 similar to the conversation. That I I've only been on for just a couple minutes, it's just uh as things are changing so rapidly. Uh I I'm I'm trying to understand what. After the extension, I I want to, I want to make sure I understand what my uh role is. Moving forward in terms of action or finding versus, you know, if if we're working on new measures. Um that are not yet a part of a declaration. What is, what does that look like for us in terms of legality and enforcement? Uh you know, if the it's city needs to go and make purchases. Uh greater than fifteen thousand, all the, you know, the the normal functions uh that we've been making for years. Uh as a as a group, uh it is, you know, all the actions have to be, of course, ratified, but I'm try- I'm trying to understand. What that looks like um after after.
Once you approve the disaster declaration, you have the same authority to act. And issue orders, like the the governor right now is issuing executive orders. You have the same authority as the governor to issue executive orders. But at the local level. So we take those up as they come, and if you have the authority to rule by order, we do it. If you, we need a council approval, then we follow up with a council approval. And if it's an emergency. Then you can have council meet with an hour's notice to approve your measure, to approve the order.
Okay, thank you.
Uh Councilmember Risa, um you know, I think things are gonna change um our power day by day. Um I'm, you know, I just don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow, uh I think we're uh. Uh I think we're all in agreement that, you know, we're gonna continue to work together as a team and try to. You know, uh do whatever it takes to uh keep everyone safe, uh but yeah, we we're gonna continue, this could, this uh. Whatever we do today, whatever actions we take today, it's gonna change by tomorrow, uh I I think uh. As as this disease spreads a little bit, uh I think that everything that we do will will continue to uh. Have to uh meet and and try to uh ratify anything that we do here today and and we've just got to work together, I I. I I just wanted to bring that up, thank you.
Okay, with that, I would like to make a motion to. Approve uh item number two, the emergency ordinance. Um, with an amendment to item number five on the ordinance. To say that the declaration may be terminated before the expiration date of a hundred and twenty days by subsequent order of the mayor. And or city council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by council member Rizzo. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Uh, we're voting just on the amendment or the the thing, the item with the amendment?
Just on the amendment. Just on the amendment to item five in the ordinance.
Got you.
Uh, if there's no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All oppose? Motion passes six to zero. All right, now for the ordinance itself, I will make a motion to. Approve. Uh, agenda item number two, emergency ordinance um as written with the approved amendment. Any discussion? I'm sorry, yes, thank you. Second by council member Rizzo. Any discussion?
Yes, um, I gotta say this before the vote. Um. I think there is a lot of uncertainty. I think there are some things that. That are certain though, and I think it's that if we don't address some of these measures and do some of the um. More shelter in place like uh initiatives in our city. Uh, we're not, in my opinion, doing. The most we can do to really uh. Flatten the curve as the experts have been saying. I think um obviously I I I'm optimistic as well that the mayor will continue to evaluate the situ- situation and move forward with more uh. More orders as as necessary. I just think that uh. Uh, this this particular one could go, could go further. Um. I wanna be a supportive um teammate on this council. Um, and I will vote for it, but I don't think that it goes far enough.
Just council member Rizzo here. Um. I know uh Travis County just uh is reporting that Kexan that uh they're gonna do a shelter in place um right now, uh but. Uh, they've got more cases of coronavirus than we do. Uh. With that being said, I'd love to see it limited here to the seven cases in Hayes County. Um, I I think we're gonna have to uh. Really, in the next couple hours, think about what we're gonna do. Uh, it's, it's uh, you know, uh, these, these are difficult times. We're gonna have to make hard decisions. Uh, and uh, I I I know where council member Ellison's coming from, uh, it's coming from his heart. He's. He's worried about the general public and and I am too. I'll tell you right now that uh. Um, I'm 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 weighing every option in my mind right now and thinking about what's best to keep everyone safe and. I I think right now, let's let's, I'd like to pass the ordinance we have before us and um make sure that. Everyone knows that anything that comes up after this, it's it's in their best interest uh as a city, as 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 the people here in Kyle.
Councilman Tobias, please. Um, I understand where Councilman Ellison is coming from and where Councilman Rizzo. The whole bottom line is the public safety for everybody. Uh, keeping the citizens safe and. It's an ongoing crisis we're having. Hour by hour, we're getting different information. And it's changing every hour by hour. And I know we can do more uh from what uh Councilman Ellison is stating. But that could change in thirty minutes. Okay, um, that can change by ten o'clock tonight. And uh we are in a a difficult situation where we have to. Be specific on certain things uh to where we can. And I know that's what the public wants. The public wants to know specifics. Of where can I go shopping or can I go shopping and how many people are in there or am I allowed? Or not gonna be allowed to go to uh medical facilities and so forth. And how long are these daycares gonna be closed? I I understand there's a big fear out there. Uh, we're all in this situation together. I have a family myself. Um. But uh it it's it's, we've got to make a decision. And we uh, this is the information that we have right in front of us. And I and I think that uh I know we can do more, but this is what we've got and and. While I'm gonna vote for what we've got. Cause again, this could change matter of an hour or so.
Is uh, is council member Shield still on the call? Okay, um. With that, if I'm gonna go ahead and uh call for the votes. It sounds like i- is uh is Mayor Mitchell still on the call?
I I'm still here.
Okay, all right, there's so there's five of us on here still, okay.
Uh, Mayor Protim, the council member Shield is still on the call. She posted in the chat. That her phone is overheated and she can't communicate to us, but she can still hear us.
It it if, yeah, Rick, if you'd like for me to give any kind of updates or if y'all have any questions or anything about. What all we're working on, uh, I I'm happy to, I'm happy to have those discussions as well. I I, you know, the. There's really nothing that I'm uh working on that is a a secret or anything like that. It's just a. Uh, there there are layers of this, obviously, that I that I can't, I can't publicly discuss because a a great deal of what is happening right now. Is I am working with other mayors, uh, judges, uh, and regional partners in in trying to figure out. What the right course is, uh, but as far as uh things that we are unilaterally working on. Uh, in Kyle of our own initiative, you know, I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk or provide updates if y'all, if you want them. It's completely up to you.
I mean, I'm always happy with, I'll speak up here and say, I'm always happy to get any kind of updates. Um, I just, I I think, well, one thing I, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, if any staff wants to jump in and and let us know. To discuss what the mayor just proposed. But I I think the biggest thing here is the reason why we don't know what is happening from the next. Uh, thirty minutes to the next or day to the next, is there's simply not enough testing available. Um, and I would love for an update, if there's anything. From what we're getting from the county as far as testing available. I would love to ha- start having discussions about how to, how we're going to logistically test people once those tests are available. Uh, we've seen uh across the country and across the globe where there's been. Effective measures on drive-through testing and and various different things where they've tested masses of people. Um, that that is why we don't know where we're at and that's why we're doing these measures. Uh, that we're taking right now and perhaps the shelter in place measures is because we don't know who's carrying this. Uh, folks can be asymptomatic, folks, it takes up to two weeks in some cases for. Uh, something to onset and happen here. There's just so many different variables with, that's the reason why it's called the novel coronavirus. We don't know that it's, it may go away because of the warmer weather, weather, because it's a new coronavirus. So I think that for me, I am in favor of pushing out deadlines further. So our citizenry and 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 people in our community and our city can uh plan. For a a longer term haul of what we may be dealing with rather than kind of, you know. Pushing it out week by week or even two weeks by two weeks. Uh, it just makes it more difficult to know what you really need to do. Um, so I I guess, like I said, it staff can speak up or Paige can speak up and let us know if there's appropriate time for the mayor to give us any updates on. Things he's working with, but I particularly wanna know more so. Uh, and this is probably coming from the county as resources are allocated from the feds to the state. Into the county, um, where where we are as far as um um. Testing in our community.
This would be an appropriate agenda item to discuss that. We we do have a request from the city secretary that uh if it's. Not going to, the discussion won't cause any change in the motion to take the vote on the motion before doing the update.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 All oppose? Motion carries five to zero.
Tracy had an eye.
Crazy had an eye?
Yes, sir.
Motion carries six to zero. Okay, so um Paige.
Yes.
If we were going to have uh the mayor uh discuss some of this, do we do this during item three?
Uh, you could do it during item two. Just have him.
Okay. We haven't, we haven't gone to the next item yet then?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. You have the floor, Mayor.
I'm back on.
Uh, yeah, I apologize, like I said earlier, for just now, cause I very much, you know, I've obviously been in communication with y'all as much as possible. Very thankful for um each and every one of you because I know that the your heartbeat is exactly the same as mine in trying to protect our community. Uh, I know that uh if any of you were in my shoes right now, you you would be doing everything you could to try to. Uh, to try to protect the community as well. And so the solidarity of the group in terms of the collective mission is something that is very helpful to me. Um, I I will say that I I agree with what uh the sort of the questions about testing with. Regards to what Councilmember Ellison was saying, we're we're in a situation where the county does. Uh, is is in charge of uh the public health system uh for Hayes and as a result. They are the ones doing a lot of the coordination of the testing and are are getting those updates, uh, the county emergency management coordinators. Uh, directors, um, you you know, they, that's where that information is coming. Larger cities, I think, like Austin and and major metropolitan areas have much more of a direct role. In the testing uh and, you know, their own uh, you know, public health system. It's just not something that we have set up in the city of Kyle, which is why. The information about testing, number of cases, I'm I'm receiving those uh through situation reports and. Uh, updates as as the county is able to provide them. Uh, the the base, basic consensus is that uh in regards to all medical supplies. We are uh far behind where we need to be, not this, not just in terms of where we need to be right now, but where we're, where we know we're going. Uh, I do think that uh while it's a great ideal to try to keep the the cases limited to seven. Um, that without a doubt, in my opinion, from everything that I've been gathering by having conversations with. Different medical folks in the region and in particular folks at Seton and at Hayes County. Uh, it's very likely that the actual number of uh uh positive cases of coronavirus in the city of Kyle is significantly. Higher than that. That's um, that is not something that it can can be confirmed. Uh, but the the amount of people that are being tested right now uh is is uh. Uh, an an enough to make me think that we are, we are much higher in that. And that, that we're only testing, uh, and this is, you know, a policy that's going, you know, nationwide, pretty much. It you, we're only testing based on uh those uh who are reporting symptoms. Uh, consistent with coronavirus and so. What we have, what we're learning, I is that asymptomatic uh 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 people exist and there, it is very. Uh, very likely there are people with coronavirus that don't even know it, that that's actually what they have and. Um, and 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 that's really what's creating the challenge that we have right now. That with containment, uh, there there's just a lot more coronavirus germs out there. Uh, in in the community than we, than than what you would think with just seven confirmed. Uh, in all of Hayes County, but my uh, my perspective has been strategically. Uh, to si- uh to to try and limit the uh the contact that people make. Uh, in the community. So the 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 first order coming down with regards to um uh. Indoor dining, ten-person rule, that's that, all of that is designed to limit the the spread of germs. Uh, the daycare, it's it's exactly the the same thing. We're trying to limit the spread of germs from person to person. Uh, so that we have time to ramp up our capacity, develop treatments. Uh, and the like, oh, obviously, everybody already knows that, but it's certainly a relevant factor in my mind because. What it's, what it's, what I'm trying to think through is how, what actions. Uh, are are should cities be trying to take right now to limit the spread of germs and. The most harrowing part of this is that is the realization that shelter in place. Uh, doesn't necessarily limit the spread of germs in the community because uh. Uh, even if you look at the the Dallas order was, there are still very many essential jobs that will remain open. Uh, and that's, uh, obviously, we wanna keep businesses open, but um. Gas stations, grocery stores a- and the like are still going to have people going in and out. And Kyle is at a particularly vulnerable spot because of I thirty-five. Situating ourselves between Austin and San Antonio and so. As those gas stations have people coming in and out and our grocery stores, people coming in and out and Home Depot, Lowe's, all those places. Uh, the chances of contamination into the community i- is very great. So if you can think of the interstate convenience retail, the the way I'm seeing it is it's a, it's an intersection between. The people in Kyle and the people that are outside of Kyle that we don't know. And I've I've spent the last two or three days really spending a lot of time. I'm trying to to observe the behavior of the people at these facilities. Bringing to bear just common knowledge of how germs uh transfer and we know that coronavirus stays on. The, you know, the handles, it on metal for, you know, at least a few hours, it stays on plastic. It's spread through the air when you sneeze or cough or even speak or breathe, you know, it projects out. And the gas stations that, you know, we have in the city of Kyle, the amount of people going in, as much as we are trying to tell and sound the alarm and. Potentially shut everything down, the people going in and out of those gas stations, some of them are taking appropriate prevent preventative measures to make sure they don't. Uh, contract viruses on surfaces and they don't uh uh transmit viruses onto surfaces. But there are a lot of people that we are not able to communicate with that are not taking this seriously. Uh, it is, uh, we, we spent time, a couple hours earlier today, we put a big sanitizing station up right in front of the door with a big sign. That says, uh, uh, city of Kyle, wash hands before enter. I mean, we put it right in front of the door, a big one. And we just backed off and watched human behavior and I watched this person after person got out of their vehicle, did not wash their hands. Walked right past it, didn't even notice it, right in and started touching uh the the gas station, you know, uh. The sites, you know, the the touch, touch points, which is what I've been trying to call it. And and then walked right back out, got in their vehicle and left. No preventative measure. And then the additionally, our gro- grocery stores do not have um any kind of. Uh, you know, limiting crowd control, uh, keeping people safe. There's not, there, no one is posting attendance outside like at HEB. Walmart, uh, the these big corporations who have to answer in large part to the general public. Who have to answer in large part to the general public, they are very motivated to to demonstrate to the world. They're taking this seriously and as a result, they are. And you've got attendants giving wipes out, you've got, you've got, you know, they're marking places, making sure everyone is staying six feet apart. They're only allowing a few people in and uh and that's great and uh obviously, I applaud HEB. For that and Walmart, I've uh gone in and and reviewed some of what they're doing and they're and they're doing uh the best they can also and. And of course, just as everyone said, more is nest is needed, but. These gas stations are completely exempted and shelter in place isn't going to change that and as I see it. That is the number one threat for more coronavirus to come into the city of Kyle. It's through these I thirty-five. Uh convenience retail locations and so that is what I I'm I'm laser focused on trying to solve that. Problem and so we're 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 using the HEB model, we're thinking about. The way that crowds are controlled in an event, you know, using our events coordinator, you know, it's it's interesting because. You know, shelter in place is a, is a phrase that I've only ever heard of in my life in terms of war. Shelter in place means, you know, that bombs are coming down overhead and take cover and you know, that's kind of what it means, but. In a pandemic, which nobody uh, you know, on this call or listening has ever experienced to this degree. The the shelter in place rule, that if you leave the primary access points of germs. Which is your convenience retail into your community, open and aren't taking drastic measures to prevent. The spread of germs in those particular facilities, I think that shelter in place probably is is actually not enough. And that's why the cities and the mayors of these cities up and down I thirty-five and and every major highway. Need to be thinking of ways to limit the spread of germs, uh you know, uh in in. At these particular locations, these hotspots, uh so that's that's what I'm, that's what we're trying to do. Uh there there is no supply that we have been able to find up till this point uh of sanitation stations. You know, we we have been contacting every vendor that we can think of. These these companies that are out there like Tito's and others that are trying to mass produce. Uh hand sanitizer are still working through, uh you know, their their setup and so we're not able to get that just yet. But thankfully, the, you know, the CDC has made uh available, uh you know, a solution mix. That can be used in place of hand sanitizer that is just as effective. Uh and it's it's very much spelled out and and that that is something we have the ability to produce, so we're trying to be. Creative and i- and come up with our own system. We've been using a gas station as our uh, you know, in East Kyle, we're not there yet, but we've been using a gas station with permission of the owner. Uh as a test site to try to see how the, what is the most efficient way to modify. Human behavior and with the example I gave earlier of the sanitation s- station in front and the big sign that tells people they have to wash their hands. You know, when you realize that even that has very little impact on managing human behavior. Uh I think you can get a sense of how challenging i- it really is, but man. Our, and I don't know why I've been saying man a lot, uh that's a terrible word for me to say in my uh in my language, but um I I. I what I, what I would say is, our staff, our police department, our parks department. Uh Paige, Scott, Samantha, Jerry, Perviz, you know, chief. We we've got uh Matt, I'm so so many of our department heads, Tim out there, Scott out there today, Scott Egbert. Um uh they are, they they understand absolutely in their core that. Being Team Kyle right now is about having a wartime mentality. They understand that in in this crisis, there's no such thing as a weekend, uh and we've, we have been in that hunker down. Focus, uh try to be as efficient as we can mentality, the entire staff has been. Really now for however many days since since this first really started to pick up traction, you know, uh. Uh I'm losing track of my days, however long ago it was and I just, I I'm very proud of of their work, you know, we're trying things. It's not always working, you know, the 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 rule of leaving the front door open is it's not gonna last uh for very long. I I I, you know, the the idea there was uh it it. It freaked me out to to use just common language. When I sat at a gas station a couple days ago and watched some twenty plus people in a row within a matter of just a couple minutes. Touch the exact same spot, walk in, touch everything inside, touch the the attendance uh through. You know, credit cards and then walk out and get back into their vehicle like it was just another day. Those gas stations. You know, are operating very much in the owners and and the staff there at all the gas stations, that's 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 not. What I'm drilling down on here, it's human behavior, cuz the gas stations, they are trying, they are trying to sanitize their pumps, they're trying to sanitize their handles. And all of the different points, but what we've, what we're starting to realize is that. The the most important thing that we can do to spread that germ is to find a way. To ensure that everyone going into a gas station washes their hands before they go in. Uh that's really the only way that I can conceive of at this point uh to really eliminate or drastically reduce. Uh the spread of uh those germs in in those gas stations and and really, we're just, what we're looking. At is the long haul here, i- in i- it, that's what I'm looking at right now, is the long haul. If we're gonna be in this bunker down mode, whether it's shelter in place or not, with with, I will say that with Travis County. Uh and Williamson County and probably Bayer County, uh you know, all prehearing up towards shelter in place protocols. The effect on the city of Kyle is going to be profound, whether or not Kyle or Hayes County issue shelter in place orders. Uh tomorrow or by the end of the week, uh you know, exactly when that comes down, the the. The effect of Travis County in particular, what, cuz what that means is all of the employees that uh would be commuting into Travis County. Uh the whole county uh will no longer be able to go to work, so they, their shelter in place order. Has a big impact in terms of shelter in place uh here and of course, I'm not saying that that is the only. Thing that we need to, we just need to let that order stand, uh I'm evaluating a- as um. As Michael said, you know, it's a every thirty minutes, you know, we're we're um, we are strongly considering. Uh in Kyle, I am strongly considering shelter in place, but I uh as I've been saying. What I think is even more important or just as important, who who knows how you categorize what's important here, but. Uh is trying to limit the spread of germs in those areas that even under a, i- i- you know, if if Judge Becerra issues a. A uh shelter in place order for the county, even under that order, there are still things that only mayors. Uh you know, and councils through ratification and affirmation can do to try to limit the spread of. Uh those germs in those particular, at those particular sites and uh uh that, that's about. That's about as much as I can think of to say right now, obviously, um it's a stream of consciousness for the, for the most part for me right now. I'm I'm going from one conversation to the next without stop, uh every minute of the day right now. You know, one meeting, one group to the next without stop.
Thank you, Mayor. Is everybody ready to move on to item number three?
I guess we kinda have to that right to stay. On the agenda, we can't really comment a whole lot about what the mayor just said, right?
Well, you've got a general posting for. The reason for this disaster declaration, so.
So we already voted on that.
Yeah.
So let's move on to uh item number three. Ratify mayor's temporary order to close daycare facilities. Paige, is this the uh, this is the current um daycare rules that we have in place right now, correct?
Correct.
So I'm gonna make a motion to uh approve item number three. Uh as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second from Councilmember Shield. Any discussion?
Yes. Uh so I know that the, in discussions I've had with the mayor about um. A consideration for um. Employees that are considered essential, uh infrastructure employees, essential government function employees and. Essential healthcare operation employees, uh was there any kind of data collected? On the percentage of our Kyle residents that are um. In those particular essential industries and what potential impact that would have on. Childcare for those individuals?
Council Mayor Ellison, are you asking staff?
Staff or the mayor that's on on the call to kind of uh get to the. Basically, how how the decision was made. To close entirely.
Can you repeat the question, Dex? I'm sorry.
Um, so I wanna know if, so and this goes back to my point in the the earlier agenda item though. Uh was there any kind of analysis or or data collected on? The amount of our residents that are considered essential uh employees. That might be still in need of childcare services throughout the day.
Yes, the uh, so the analysis that we did was uh performed at the police department. I asked Chief to to do that analysis and and really, he'd already been gearing up to do it on uh on his own. And uh hi- his feedback was that he believed there would be a five percent. Five percent of the workforce, his workforce would struggle uh to find daycare uh and that um. If we closed, that it would have a a slight impact, but that they believe they would be able to maintain one hundred percent operational effectiveness. Uh I also reached out to uh and had conversations with the the CEO, Director of Kyle ER. Uh to uh to get a sense of what uh the elimination of daycare would be for them. Uh they said that obviously, there there would be some challenges with a few of their employees, but they believe they'd be able to maintain one hundred percent operational effectiveness. Um and I even, I even went into some of the uh stores that are non-essential. Uh and where I know there are staffs and 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 had and asked managers. What the elimination of daycare would look like and it was very much consistent, difficult, challenging. Um but not uh uh not. Go- it was not going to eliminate their operational abilities to stay open and provide services. So on that basis, the actual business of daycares, uh and uh when I, when weighing. The the that against uh the um. Uh spread of the coronavirus and the threat that we face is, that that is the basis that I made the, uh on which I made that decision. We certainly will have opportunities if 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 things were to to change because. You know, we we sent twenty thousand students home and today was the the first day that they're supposed to go back. Um if there arises a need where we're, we are starting to uh uh experience. Uh challenges with maintaining one hundred percent operational effectiveness with any emergency services. Uh or essential personnel organizations, we will have the ability to respond quickly to that. Uh there are a lot of jurisdictions throughout the region uh that are are monitoring that. Pretty much, you know, on a uh on a constant basis and and that is certainly something that I'm trying to monitor as well. Uh and and all all of us are are trying to monitor, but we have, just because the daycares are closed. I- if there is an emergency where we need to put something together to to watch uh uh the kids of. Yeah, essential personnel, uh that's certainly something that we can put to, put together right now. As it relates to priorities, so long as our essential services are able to maintain effectiveness. I have not, uh uh I was originally going to try to to solve that problem or to put something together. Uh but as long as we're at a hundred percent effectiveness, uh I'm I'm focused on uh stopping the spread of the virus.
Absolutely, and before I go on, I I wanna state that I've been watching. Uh closely what you've been doing, Mayor, and I think that you have done a fantastic job and that that is an understatement, in my opinion. Uh with your leadership, not only for the city, but the entire region and has impacted the county as well. Uh I've seen firsthand how these decisions are have waited on, have weighed on you. And the stress and difficulty of these decisions um i- is is apparent. And for you to stand out and want to do live streaming on Facebook and put yourself out there. In a manner um that you've done, I think, is um. Is second to none as far as leadership in a time during during like we're dealing with, so I I certainly and emphatically. Appreciate what you've done as far as your leadership here.
I I appreciate it, thank you.
I I just wanna, so I guess going back to my point in my question though, um and and some of the things you described. Uh so you said that there were some of non-essential places that you've gone to. What, one of my concerns was in the earlier uh agenda item, was that we do not have. Definitively what we are calling essential and non-essential um operations within our city. And so, since we haven't necessarily defined what those are, we still have a very broad and wide spectrum of. Um people that may still be going to work, may not be, it all depends on, as I was stating earlier, that domino effect. That happens between government taking action a- and and dictating. And then businesses eventually bending to that only because of the the regulations placed by the government. In which case, they've had to make decisions. I don't wanna sound anti-business, but that is just. Kind of the nature of what it is, a business is gonna stay open as long as and do what it can to. Do why it opened in the first place, make money for those that have started it until there is action taken that restricts. And uh and regulates them. Um so I guess my point in the. Particular keeping to the subject matter of the agenda item um. Is that when we haven't defined essentially what these entities are. We still have, could have a very large spectrum of people that are still going out to work and we we don't have an idea of. Uh or any kind of close idea of what need there would be for childcare uh services during this time. And I definitely don't dissu- I wanna make this clear, I don't uh disagree with the decision. On the child and daycares, it actually is a a a more progressive step than even some other regions have taken. Even the 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 Dallas County uh shelter in place order that I've been uh touting throughout this call. Doesn't go as far as that, it does include um uh childcare facilities, providing services that enable employees. Exempted in this order to work as permitted, so it specifically states that, you know, for those, for people that are uh. And it clearly defines what essential retail is, what essential critical infrastructure, government functions and healthcare operations are. Um so I I guess that that is kind of more or less the point I was, I was trying to get at. And trying to understand what information has been considered and I certainly appreciate that the. Our uh law enforcement agency was cons- consulted, uh Kyle ER was consulted and things like that. So there definitely was an effort made and I I I certainly appreciate that and obviously, uh. You're working in an exhaustive measure to try to uh cover all bases there are, is uh obviously. Is, uh, obviously you're working with limited resources as well.
Thank you, council member Dex, uh, anybody else? All right, if no one else is wishing to speak, um, item number three is, uh, motion has been made. Uh, I'll go ahead and take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Agenda item number four. Is an ordinance adopting uh, section one. No, no, pursue it to one two two point zero zero six. Uh, this is the gas station ordinance to maintain one door be open during business hours. Uh, Mayor, do you have anything to add to this?
Uh, yes, I do actually, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm now on uh, I thirty five, so it might be a little bit loud. Uh, uh, because I've got you on the car audio. Um, the, the, the process that I went through, um, obviously I don't, I, I've already told you this. You know, the, the behavior story that led to, you know, trying to find ways to eliminate. Uh, the spread, uh, that primary contact point. But um, we originally spent a lot of time trying to consider how often. Uh, we want to, if we, if we want to try to require uh, a certain type of sanitation reg- regiment. At our stores and what that would look like, uh, that, those policies we are crafting uh, in, in real time. But the, the design, so as I was processing through. The, the impact of, of requiring uh, the doors to be open. Um, the, I, I, I spent a lot of time in consultation with P E C. Uh, to try to understand uh, what the impact on the power grid might be. I spoke to uh, owners of the gas stations or, I should say, I spoke to an owner of. Uh, many of the gas stations in Kyle, uh, and, and, and had conversations with him about that as well. Uh, there is certainly uh, concern that, that the gas station uh, owners in Kyle have. Uh, and managers about at, as. On, on multiple fronts, there's questions about uh, disease and security, there's questions about. Uh, whether or not condensers might start to freeze up and there could be real problems with keeping those doors open. Uh, I will say this, I appreciated, I, I was driving by and they deserve a shout out because they don't have near as many of these problems. Uh, Discount Tire in Kyle had both of their doors propped open so that people could walk through them. Uh, and I, I, that was, you know, because keeping your door open is different for, in, in terms of every different store. But it's just a great policy you can put in place to eliminate the most significant contact point in your business. So I'd love seeing Discount Tire and if other businesses uh, follow along in that, uh, I just applaud them. Uh, I have received reports back uh, earlier today, uh, that some of the gas stations are. Uh, certainly warmer than they like and there is, that, there is concern there. Uh, obviously springtime, you're getting a lot more uh, outdoors, uh, the out, the outdoor environment, bugs, pollen, things like that. It's, it's really starting to ramp up. I do not believe that the, the one door open policy will last. Uh, probably even uh, by this time tomorrow. Uh, because it was always just intended to, to be a temporary thing until we could get. Uh, more well-thought-out policies that would address the same thing. Uh, the reason that, that policy came into, uh, into existence, it came from a conversation I had with. Uh, Dr. Dupont at Kyle ER, she consulted with, uh, before she gave official responses. She consulted with multiple uh, industry leaders, uh, and, and uh, doctors and her colleagues. To try to determine, you know, what, what can we do to limit the, the, limit the spread? And she obviously felt like, so when we're talking about fifteen minutes or thirty minutes sanitizing a door handle every single time. Bathrooms, all of those things, if the behavior isn't changing. So that people are washing their hands before they walk into a gas station and washing their hands after they. Uh, uh, leave a gas station, but particularly before they go in. Even if you were to require every pump, every door handle, uh, and every surface and point of sale machine to be. Uh, uh, sanitized every fifteen minutes. There are still in mu- many of our stores, in the gas stations in particular. Uh, a lot of people touching between that fifteen minute segment. And the doctors are, uh, what they are saying is the, the absolute best practice needs to be sanitation between touches. So we were thinking about the door itself and the sanitation between those two touches. Uh, it's just, it's in, it's not feasible, um, you know, at least initially. Uh, that, you know, we didn't think it was feasible, we couldn't, couldn't comprehend a way. And that's what led to uh, the door open policy. Gloves, we talked about requiring gloves or, we, we've looked at every kind of scenario. Uh, and the consensus of the medical community is that gloves are minimally helpful, minimally. And they stressed it because germs, when people, if you wear gloves all day, you're not getting germs on your hand, you're getting germs on the gloves. So gloves become not nearly as effective as you would think. Not limiting the spread of germs, what you need is a, a respirator or a, um, uh, a ventilator, a mask. Uh, that's what you need if you don't wanna get contaminated, if you're already not contaminated. But even then, if you're not contaminated and you touch something that is and get the virus on your hand. And touch something else, you can still spread those uh, the, the disease around. So we're trying to find the answer to how do we actually stop the spread of the germs? Uh, and that's what is leading to the, the policy we're working on now. Uh, to come up with some kind of H E B ti- type scenario. Uh, or standard, uniform standard, uh, to, uh, to get uh, sanitation stations at the entrance of every gas station. Form a queue, just like at H E B, have them spaced six feet apart, limit the amount of people that can go in. And compel them uh, to wash their hands, uh, and hold the business uh, responsible for. Uh, on some level, compliance, to make sure that they're uh, following those policies. And so we're still trying to figure out legalities, we're trying to figure out uh, effectiveness. And then we're also trying to build schematics, uh, marketing materials, we gotta print things up. Uh, I know people want just the absolute fastest response possible, which is why we are in a wartime setting. In terms of, uh, there's no such thing as a, a weekend, uh, and are working absolutely around the clock. We are conscripting people almost, I mean, not in a legal sense because, uh, we don't have to. Uh, everyone is trying to help in the community, uh, but, you know, we had, we found out that we had, in terms of, you know. We just don't have any sanitation stations, we're calling everyone to get them and they're just not available. And if you order them, uh, you might be able to get them in two weeks. So, so obviously that's not, um, you know, that's not good enough for us, so we're having to try to be creative. But uh, my, my intention is if we can get, uh, if we can get the, the queuing system and the, and the procedure in place. Uh, and, you know, then we, we will be able to get those doors closed. My ask would be, uh, that you would leave the policy in place, uh, until, um, uh, we can. Uh, create and implement the new policy and, and we are beginning at eight AM tomorrow. Uh, we have a team dedicated to that policy, they're working right now and continue working all the way up until then. Uh, we're gonna have crews going uh, from, uh, from gas station to gas station, uh, with T D S. Who has graciously uh, sold us, but we were able to buy all of their supply of uh, crowd control barriers. We've been in consultation with the fire department, uh, make sure that we're setting these things up to keep people. So that, you know, in the event of fire, so we're trying to comply with fire codes and just so many different layers to it. It just, it just takes time, but that, that would be, uh, my request is that you extend it. Even knowing that my intention is probably to uh, uh, rewrite it or overrule it with a more exhaustive policy. Um, by, uh, by midday tomorrow, maybe even before that.
Okay, any other, uh, discussion?
This is Councilman Tobias here, um. Mayor, first of all, thank you for everything you're doing, I know you're on the road a lot. Checking with these businesses and um, trying to educate, and I think that's the main. Word we gotta use as well, is educating not only the business owners, but the general public of this crisis. Um. It could just be a matter of not understanding the importance of the proper hygiene. Or, uh, catching this virus i- is, is a, a very serious issue. Maybe it's just not in the back of their mind. Um, and, and, and we're in, you're in, we're in a tough spot right now trying to educate the public. Cause we can go on our, our news feeds and our live feeds to continue to stress to people to wash your hands. Use precautions, but if you've got people that are getting gas and. Taking about five minutes just to go in and get out and, and maybe not thinking that way, I don't know what it's gonna take. I don't know if it's gonna take unfortunately, one of these uh, residents, residents catching this and seeing the effects of it. And really taking a serious note on it, I don't know, but we don't want that to happen, obviously. But it could be, um, just again, educating these business owners of the importance of the customers that come in. To take precaution and educating the people that are coming in about the dangers of the virus. And, um, hopefully they can start thinking it's serious, um, and reduce the spread.
Thank you, council member Tobias. Anyone else? Can I get a motion for item four?
Mayor Brooke Tim, I'll make a motion that we pass item number four, as is.
My second.
Okay, I have a motion by uh, council member Rizzo, a second by council member Tobias. To uh, approve uh, item number four as written. All in, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. All right, uh. Item number five is adjourned this meeting. Uh, thank you everyone for, uh, getting on this meeting on short notice, I appreciate that.
Just real quick, before Mayor Brooke Tim, before we adjourn, I'd just like to say, uh, I wanna thank all of council, the mayor for all the work they've done. For all y'all have done, uh, in the past week, I know we've been on a lot of calls, a lot of conferences. I'm glad that everybody, uh, had flexible schedules to do this and I just wanna, uh, tell everybody out there that we're working hard. I mean, we might be doing too much, but it's better to do too much than not enough, but I, I can tell you, I'm, I'm very, uh. I'm very proud of the work that council and the mayor have been doing and I, I love that we're all working together to achieve one goal and that's to keep everybody safe. And with that being said, uh, I'll let you adjourn the meeting, Mayor, Mayor Brooke Tim.
All right, uh, all those in favor of adjourning this meeting and Team Kyle, say aye.
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 Motion adjourned.